Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, August 14th, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. We start each meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please start the meeting?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on Wall 3 of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed today's open meeting is available in the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Item 9 and 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or corrections? All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through August 14, 2018.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is new business, 4A, or excuse me, next is number three, special presentation, introduction of Aaron Stitt, nominee for appointment to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee, Jeff Moll, Lincoln Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to take this opportunity today to welcome Aaron Stitt to the Visitors Promotion Committee. The Visitors Promotion Committee in May, which would have been our last meeting, had brought Aaron Stitt's name forward to serve on the Visitors Promotion Committee. This position will be to replace Dave Wheaton, who served full eight years, which is two four-year terms, with the Visitors Promotion Committee. And as part of the bylaws, we do have to have three hotel motel lodging industry members on this committee, so this would be the third. Aaron, with approval today, would join Lynn Ireland, our Chair from the Nebraska State Historical Society, Becky Parrott, Vice Chair with Runza National, Roland Morgan with the Lincoln Hotel Group, Amy Dickerson with the Lancaster Event Center, Susan Madsen with the Lincoln Marriott Cornhusker Hotel, and Jeff Cunningham with the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation. And I would tell you that to have Aaron with me here today is, he and I were chuckling here about a month or so ago, about how long we've known each other in this industry, and Aaron has done so many great things in the hotel industry. To have him come onboard and bring his dedication to the industry, his passion, I think we're very fortunate to have this opportunity. So with that, I'll let Aaron introduce himself and give you a little idea of his background.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I started in the hospitality industry when I was 19 years of age. Started at the Embassy Suites. Was very blessed to open that hotel with Lenny Green as GM and worked for JQH and at that hotel for eight years and then had the opportunity to help open La Vista Courtyard and Embassy Suites just off the La Vista interchange between here and Omaha and then went to with Lenny to be a part of the opening of the Renaissance Hotel and Spa in Glendale, Arizona, just a suburb of Phoenix and was there for about six years. Had such titles as outlets, one of the outlets managers, worked in housekeeping as a manager, front office, valet, all those types of things and had a lot of great experience besides being at the Embassy Suites in Lincoln as one of the head bartenders and worked in food and beverage for a lot of years. After Phoenix, I did task force for John K. Hammond for a little bit and helped out at a hotel in Tucson and then a hotel in Reno and then had the opportunity to move back to Lincoln where I'm from. I'm from Hastings and opened the Courtyard Hotel and have been there since and reside as general manager there. So very honored to have this opportunity in front of me to be on the VPC and just do what I can to help support the CBB and just head them in the right direction of supporting our city, but yet focus on the hospitality industry and what we need to come to Lincoln and to Lancaster County. So very excited for this opportunity, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Deb?
Well, we appreciate your volunteer service.
Absolutely.
You've got a great team to work with, the fellow members and then, of course, the staff, Jeff and Derek, and Derek really do a great job for us and it's one of those things that most people don't even know goes on with the allocation of the lodging tax and all the work that we do to bring great events to Lincoln.
Yep.
So we appreciate your expertise.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's been great, you know, I've gotten to know, I've known these guys for a long time, but I've gotten to know Derek a little bit better. I just recently was voted to be President of Lincoln Lodging Association, so I've gotten to work closer with Derek over the last year, so it's been good to get to know him. I've known Jeff from Embassy Suites a long, long time ago and so it's just been great, so appreciate this opportunity.
Great. Yeah, well, welcome. And, you know, you bring a wide variety of talents because you've served in so many different areas and so we look forward to working with you. What about your family? Do you have?
I do, yeah, I have a wife. Her name is Shelley Stitt. We reside just on a small acreage between Seward and Lincoln. We've got two little kiddos. Laura is three and Jackson is two, so.
How many dogs and cats?
Just one dog. He's about, he's about four and a half pounds, so he's really, really tiny, but yeah, just enjoying life, so super busy, but.
Is that in the bylaws, dogs and cats? Check on that.
Usually when you have kids and you're on acreage.
Yep.
It follows.
Sure, yep.
All right, great, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move along. Mr. Clerk, would you call the correlating item, please?
This is new business, 4A, is appointment of Aaron Stitt to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee for a four-year term commenced in July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, let's continue with the agenda.
4B is amusement license application from Josh and Amanda Catovy, doing business as JK's Pumpkin Patch, a whole of Fall Fun Farm Pumpkin Patch from September 14, 2018 through October 28, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM at 757 Bluff Road, Lincoln.
I have a question regarding this item. There was an email that came in from Josh requesting a specific number of events because he wanted the special permit or amusement license to also include the winter event? No?
Can staff address this question?
Monique, I believe it came into you, the email?
About a winter event?
All right, okay. Give me a second. Sorry, I thought it was going to be attached and I don't see it now.
I know Planning did mention something about they can only have so many events per year, so that might be what he was referring to. I'd have to double check with Planning.
Okay.
As far as the number of events.
I noticed, and this is from him, I noticed Planning put there's only one event allowed during the year. In the past, they've also done a winter wonderland and we went through the zoning changes along with the council and should be a maximum number, should not be the number of events, but the maximum number of days.
I might, Corey Beatty, Deputy County Clerk, I might propose, if you would, maybe holding this for a week to let us confirm what the intent of the applicant is?
All right, that would be great, thank you.
All right, that's the consensus. We will skip item 4B, hold till next week. Let's move along with the agenda.
4C is a resolution in a matter of the 2018-2019 annual cost of living wage adjustments for unrepresented classified employees, attorneys ones and twos, deputy sheriff captains and district court staff attorneys, all wage adjustments are due effective August 16, 2018.
Morning.
Good morning. Nicole Gross, Human Resources. We brought these items forward to you a week and a half ago at a staff meeting and HR is recommending a two and a half percent increase for these employees, so it's here today for your approval.
Okay, any questions?
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D is a resolution authorizing the installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So the first of these items for traffic control devices is in Foreman Ridge and it's the installation of white Chevrons. And I'll throw my white Chevron up there too, because I don't think I've ever recommended a white Chevron to, to the board as a, as a sign. It turns out that, and then, of course, I do some research and I noticed that they're being installed around the city of Lincoln on traffic circles and roundabouts. And so this is kind of replacing the one-way sign. It's supposed to be less confusing in the manual of uniform, traffic control devices, the white Chevron. So it will be installed at these two locations to help traffic around the roundabouts.
Just to clarify, item D is the school bus stop sign and then the Chevrons are part of 4E, just to clarify.
Okay.
So we're on 4D. Do you have any information about the bus stop we need to consider?
Indeed.
I guess is my question.
So bus stop ahead sign, we did a investigation of the particular site. What we do for that is we look at stopping site distance to determine if there's enough, enough distance for, at a bus stop, for children to be safely picked up. In this instance, we determined that we do need a school bus stop ahead sign to warn, to warn drivers and so we are recommending installation of that sign at the location shown on the exhibit.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4D. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a resolution authorizing installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So structure H115 is.
Oh, hold on, we haven't voted on the Chevrons yet. We need to do that.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion for 4E?
Yes, move approval.
Second, I just have a question. Maybe it's one of those visual things, but when I look at it, I see black Chevrons. But it's officially called a white Chevron?
It's white because the background is white and that is what changes. If it was on a curve and indicating the leaving of the edge of pavement, it would be yellow with black on the top of it.
Okay.
With the directional arrows.
Okay.
So yellow Chevrons or white Chevrons.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. F is a grant agreement with Nebraska Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Lancaster County H115 Culver Project. The federal share of the project cost shall not exceed $107,523. The county's share is at least $35,841.
So county structure H115 located on 176th Street, north of Elbow Road. We've been working with NEMA, the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, in order to get a hazard mitigation grant for this structure for about three years. And so this is the initial contract with them so that we can start this project and hopefully we can finish this project sooner than three years.
Move, move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is an interlocal agreement with Educational Service Unit Number 18 for educational services to youth detained at the Youth Services Center. The county will reimburse the ESU up to $893,214 for the services provided. The term of the agreement is from August 1, 2018 to July 31, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H is Federal Equitable Sharing Agreement and Annual Certification Report for the Lancaster County Attorney's Office Regarding Equitable Sharing Activity of Drug Forfeiture Funds for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 4I is a memorandum of understanding with EnviroTech Services, Inc., using the state and Nebraska contract number 14916OC to provide liquid deicing products. The term is upon execution through December 14, 2018. The pricing will be pursuant to the state's contract. The cost of county is not to exceed $6,000.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. J is a contract with De novo Venture LLC using the state and Nebraska Service Contract Number 7394904 to provide managed services. The initial term of the contract is September 1, 2018 through August 30, 2019. The pricing will be pursuant to the state's contract and De novo statement of works. The cost of county is not to exceed $24,000.
Morning.
Morning, Bob Walla, purchasing agent. I just want to clarify on this. This is a contract with the city and county for managed services for the JDE system and our contract administrator was able to combine this city and county where previously it was separated. And basically, the city has specific work for JDE that needs to be done, so they are at this point paying for the $2,000 per month fee up to $24,000, but the county is eligible to use it as an ad hoc contract in the event that their JDE should go down. So $24,000 was put on this in the event that you should need something done, but there is no commitment to funds at this point.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is a grant contract with the hub in the amount of $1,000 for the project hire program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice, Community-Based Juvenile Services Aid Program Grant Number 18-CB-0525. The term of the grant contract is July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number five, consent items. Util of grants with the following. Number 1697, allowing Black Hills Energy to install a new underground gas line under Southwest 40th Street from West 8th Street to High Ridge Road. There is no cost to the county. Number 1698, Align Wind Street, Nebraska LLC, to relocate fiber optic cable under Hickman Road from South 68th Street to South 78th Street. There is no cost to the county. Amendments to the following contracts. County Contract C-17-737 with TLC Dry Cleaners for annual service, uniform cleaning. The amendment renews the contract from September 12, 2018 through September 11, 2019. The cost of county shall not exceed $16,000. County Contract Number C-16-472 with Nebraska Salt and Grain Company for annual supply of road salt. The amendment renews the contract from September 13, 2018 through September 12, 2019. The cost of the county shall not exceed $60,000. Receive and place on file the Lancaster County Records and Information Management Report for July 2018.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business and on the agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August 16, 2018 at 8:30 AM in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, August 21, 2018 at 9:00 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right, now we will open the meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization for August 14. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on Wall 3 of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 1B is approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Thursday, August 9, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the, of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is notice of taxable status for Lincoln Housing Authority.
Good morning, Scott Gaines, Deputy County Assessor, Registered Deeds. This is an item that we recently discovered where the housing authority is leasing space to a local construction company. The lease was begun in October of '14. They should have been reporting this lease to us all along. We just became aware of it, so this is to notify them that we are retroactively placing it on the tax rolls from the effective date of the lease, so in effect, it becomes 2015, '16, '17, '18 taxable property. Recommending approval of the board sending the notice to tax this property.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Scott or discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number four is a public hearing, notice of proposed change in exemption status. This is for the Second Church of Christ Scientists, Cornerstone Baptist Church, Sisters of Mercy of America's West, Sand Words Charitable Trust.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on the notice of proposed change in exemption status. Does anyone want to testify on this item?
Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Registered Deeds.
Do you sound like you swear affirm that the testimony about gives the truth or nothing but the truth?
I do. These are four properties that have been granted exemptions previously. They have now sold. The procedure to remove them is the board needs to notify them that they've lost the exemption status because of the sale of the property.
Okay, any questions for Scott? All right, let's continue and, well, let's close that public hearing and open the next.
Should we go ahead and vote on that first?
Yes, that'd be fine. Let's do the correlating item.
This would be number five, action on notice of proposed change in exemption status.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is motor vehicle tax exemption applications for State Thomas Aquinas Church, Lincoln Christian School, the American Legion Department of Nebraska, North American Martyrs Church and School, Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders County, Priestley Fraternity of St. Peter's Doing Business as Our Lady of Guadalupe, Christ United Methodist Church, American National Red Cross, Christ Lutheran Church, Nebraska Safety Council, Inc., and Emmanuel.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone who wants to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the clerk to call item number six.
This is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is 2018 451 tax exemption applications on real and personal property from Cornerstone Baptist Church.
We're recommending denial of this application. They missed the statutory deadline of July 1 to make application. They dated and presented the application to us July 5, so we don't have any choice but to deny it and they can make application for next year.
Okay, Deb? Did they previously have an exemption?
This is, I think it's a church parsonage where they sold one. I think we just removed one. And the timing when they bought the other one was late in June and they did not make application on it, so it's a, it's a parsonage newly acquired, newly owned by them, so that, they make it, if you acquire, buy it before July 1, the statute requires you make application by July 1 in order to have the exemption for that year.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Scott? All right, any other questions for Scott? I don't know if we formally opened the public hearing on that but we're going to close it now and take action on item number seven.
This is action on 2018 forfeit fee one tax exemption application on real and personal property from Cornerstone Baptist Church.
Move approval of the denial?
I second the denial.
All right, we have a motion to deny this application. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number eight is review of the 2018 forfeit fee one exemption application from Heartland Church Network.
This is a property that had been fully exempt and the church sold off a portion of the property to a taxable entity, so this is just to review and our recommendation is that we modify the exemption to continue to exempt the church-owned portion of that parcel and to tax the private-owned portion of that parcel.
Okay.
And it's subsequently been split into two pieces by our office, so tax the private, exempt the church.
Okay. Exactly. The agenda says review of applications, so we are sending the notification.
Right, because technically what happened is that whole piece had been granted an exemption and anytime we are potentially going to modify that previously granted exemption, we have this, we take the information to you, you guys make the call and notify them that we're modifying the exemption to only reflect the portion that they still own.
I move we notify Heartland Church of the change in their exemption status.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number nine is 2018 late filed homestead exemptions. This is for Maria Lord's Farquhar, Greg and Joan Ortiz, Lance Boyle, Sandy Bolajak, Henry and Patricia Mikey, Janice Ashoff, Kathleen Straka, Alan and Sharon Spees, Nyla Moyer, Alice Long, Sandra and Donald Miller, Larry and Darla Johnson, Wayne and Karen Sandish, Wayne Hits, Eunice Page, Kathleen Kane, John and Barbara Reek, Candace Krivda, Shirlene Kendall, Susan and Charles Combs, and Linda Jacoby Mussondon.
Every year, there's a deadline for filing homestead exemptions of June 30th. The statute allows an extension of that deadline to July 20th upon board approval and the only restriction is if the applicant had had an extension in the previous year, they can't get them in consecutive years. None of these people were late last year, so we're recommending approval of the late filing for each of those on the list.
Move approval of the late filing exemptions?
I second that with a thanks to the assessor staff that worked so hard to reach out to these people.
You beat me to it, Deb. I did want to always thank our staff, works very hard to prevent the homestead applicants from missing either of these deadlines, so they do a great job and it's the one public service that they really enjoy, keeping people from missing these things, so thank you.